Our most gracious heaven and father, we are gathered here tonight to conduct the town's business. May you offer us guidance. May we make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Now, God directed us in everything that we say and do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. You join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Our county commissioner for this area. Item number five on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second.
Mayor, we do have a public comment to add to the agenda.
Right. We'll add that, sure will.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, motion say aye. Aye. Posed, motion carries. Okay. I have a recognition item. I believe it's for the Girl Scouts. Is that, are they here?
I think they're running behind.
Okay, we'll get it later then. Item number seven is introduction of new employees.
Mayor, I believe Brad will be first.
So I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian Bell. He'll be our new support analyst in IT. He comes from, he's got about two years of experience in government technology. Currently, he works at county schools and he had a stint of an internship with the city of Greenville. I'll let Brian say some words.
Just thank y'all for this opportunity and hope to serve the community well.
Look forward to seeing you around town hall and other places.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to ask the next three gentlemen if they would come up together.
Senator, would the, I think I've seen him before.
I'm going to come down here so I can see all of you as I talk to you. We have three distinguished gentlemen with us tonight. I'm going to go in no particular order but introduce them. We have, I believe you know this gentleman, Evan Johnston, who has been appointed our permanent Parks and Recreation Director. So I will introduce Evan.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. I would like to thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to continuing serving the town. I think that there is a lot of opportunity for growth and I think I'm the right person to facilitate that. I appreciate all the opportunities again that have been given me. As you guys know, I started out as a full-time employee in the town of Winneville in 2009 and it was my first full-time employment as a Parks and Recreation professional. So again, thank you very much and I look forward to continuing working with all of you.
Thank you, Evan.
Mr. Mike Weldon is next. I think several of you all may know Mr. Weldon. He is a resident of Winneville, coming to us on March 25th as the code enforcement officer/building inspector from the city of Greenville. Mike, we're excited, so welcome.
Hello, council. I'd like to thank the town of Winneville and Ms. Parker for giving me the opportunity to work with the town of Winneville. Been a resident here for quite a while and of course, my wife, everybody knows my wife, she grew up here. And so we're just looking forward to this new opportunity and I know with Terry's support and the great staff she has, I know we'll do some good things with code enforcement.
Last but certainly not least, we have Travis Wellborn. Travis comes to us as the new Public Works Director starting March 25th from Rivers and Associates and he's excited and ready to get started, so we welcome Travis.
So I thank y'all for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to it and this is an exciting move for me and I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Gentlemen, welcome. We look forward to welcoming you. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing us to come here tonight. Just to bring you up to date a little bit, we have a cemetery committee and we've been tasked with the beautification of our committee, of the cemeteries. We have two cemeteries for Winneville, the Fire Tire Road Cemetery and the Reader Branch Road Cemetery. A lot of people weren't aware of the North, Winneville North Cemetery, the Fire Tire Road, so it has introduced a lot of people to it. One of our major concerns at the Reader Branch Cemetery was the container site behind it. And I think you have already taken some action or initiated action to check on what we can do about that site. That is one thing that a lot of people have talked about when they're having a service there and the dump trucks are coming in and trying to dump garbage and the noise and it's just really hard when you're having a service there. We have come up with two things or two plans for the cemetery. We call this Phase One. The first one, now this is the Fire Tire Road Cemetery. For those that are not familiar with it, if you go out Winneville Parkway and go east on Fire Tire Road, just before you get to the railroad track on the left is that cemetery. We've gone out several times, we've been meeting since last July about this and we've come up with a couple of things. Little's Nursery was kind enough to come out, walk the sites with us and give us some ideas on plants and that type of thing, just to make it look a little bit better, a little privacy from the front road there on Fire Tire Road and to hide a little bit of that scenery that you see, the railroad tracks where it's grown up pretty good and the other plant. And I can go through quickly what we've got. On the Fire Tire Cemetery, along the entrance road, she is going, that's on the, where the red dots are, there will be four groups of three and those are going to be knockout roses. And here, I'm going to get you this. And that's what they'll look like. We're going to try to space them, they're different areas in there with graves. Some areas appear to be open, but all of the sites in that cemetery have been sold. So what we do is, right now, we can really concentrate on making that a nicer cemetery. So we'll have the knockout roses. Across the front of the cemetery, right up against Fire Tire Road, we're going to have five wax-leaf ligustrums. Now, that's like a tree type thing, really a push, depends on how you trim it. It'll grow roughly about 10 to 12 feet. So it will give some privacy up there, but it won't interfere with any overhead lines. Then along the railroad track, we're going to have 30 wax-leaf ligustrums. There are going to be 10 groups of three. You'll see those little green triangles on the right-hand side of the cemetery. And we're trying to space them out, if you notice, there's an overhead power line there. We're trying to stay off of the railroad right of the way and still have access to all the power lines. We're looking for stuff that is low maintenance and low upkeep down the road. We have an estimate, this, part of this was a presentation for the budget, we understand, but we have an option for you tonight. The estimate for there is around $1,304. Another thing that we wanted to put in the cemetery are some benches. We don't have any pictures, I don't think, of those, but they're the concrete low benches, just to be placed around in the cemetery so that people have a place to sit down and rest, pay their respects. The benches are roughly about $100 apiece and we were hoping to get five benches for that cemetery site. So that would put us about $1,804 roughly for that site. We're not sure if that's going to be enough, but we're trying to stretch the money as far as we can. But we want to start with this and we can come back later and add plants. Now, the cost includes the mulch and everything that's going to be around them, so, and planting them. The only other thing, does the town, the question I have is, does the town have a way to water those plants?
Yes, sir.
If we do, fantastic. The Reader Branch Cemetery, really until we know more about the container site, there's not a great deal that we can do. But two areas of concern, we're back where the old treatment plant was, right along there. Right along that fence, we're going to plant 30 of those jasmine plants and they will cover that fence and cover up that area so it won't be such an hassle. And then in the very front, right along Reader Branch Road, we've got a pretty steep little hill there and there is some erosion taking place. We're going to try to put five yards of centipede sod, there's going to be some topsoil and the pins to hold all of that in place. And the total for that was going to be around $804. And then if we do with the benches, that would put us around $1,304 for that site. So our options are, we can try to get it in next year's budget, but then we can't do any planning until next winter or the spring. According to Little's Nursery, this month is really the last month we have, so we've got a window of opportunity if there's, I don't know how you would work this, if there were any money available that could be put in this fund now, we could go ahead and have this done and then we could start working on Phase Two and Three. A lot of it's going to depend on what happens with the container site. So those are the things that we're trying to do by being able to take care of our own water and we don't have to pay Little's to come back and do that. So I would like to thank Mr. Cooper, Terry Parker, and Alan Lilly. They have really been a great help to us. They've been at a lot of our meetings, most all of them, and answered any questions and provided us with maps and everything. Do you have any, does town council or the mayor have any questions?
Total amount of money?
We're looking about $3110 number along there.
I make a motion that we appropriate $3100 out of general fund for this project to start on immediately.
Second. Mayor, before the council votes, I believe I can probably find it within the existing budget.
Okay. This question I was wanting to ask, and I've been asked several times by different people, has any thought been given to, when there is a funeral service in progress there, to maybe just close it? Most time, it's over with within 30 to 40 minutes. Closing that roadway while the funeral is being conducted or has that?
We've, Matt was talking about it one of the meetings. The hard thing is, a lot of the people that use that really don't have a schedule there. It's for the county and they're trying to just clean up and I don't know if, you know, that's going to be a big inconvenience for them. We've tried to make it as easy on everybody as we could.
I mean, like I said, I was asked that question and I told him I wouldn't ask.
I think we will try to take all possibilities into account when we're discussing.
Okay, now the motion, was it to do the cemetery on Fire Tire?
Both of them, $3100.
I think it's more than $3100 for both of them.
Should be around $3110 with the benches.
For this phase?
This phase, that's correct.
Maybe we call it Phase One.
Phase One, the plantings.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Posed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
The cemetery down on Fire Tire Road.
Yes, ma'am.
I know it is located on Fire Tire Road, which is a name that gives its location, but I know that we, we know it as, you know, we call it down the railroad. So it's really north Winneville Cemetery. I think that's the sign to something.
North Winneville, right.
Well, north Winneville.
North Winneville, okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just personally thank Leland publicly for his work. He's really put some time and effort into this and I appreciate it, Leland. Thank you.
Glad to do it. Thank you.
Okay, the second item is the citizen notification system.
Mayor, council members, I believe Brad Black will be updating you on that item.
Good evening, mayor and council members. You have to excuse me, I feel like I might be getting a little sick, so I might be a little scratchy here. But I'm here to tell you a little bit about our citizen notification system that we're going to put in place and it's about engaging and enhancing our citizen services. So what we've chosen to use is Code Red. Code Red began as an emergency alert system and it's maintained by the Emergency Communications Network. ECN brings experience, easy use, reliability, and redundancy to the product that other notification systems can't offer. It's designed specifically to enable local governments and officials to send messages to their citizens and communicate on a routine basis within minutes. What services do they offer? 24-by-7, but 365 interrupted service, a notification portal for our citizens to go and activate and be part of our government, geocoded mapping data. We can target precise locations in emergency situations or in weather situations, speeding, speed of getting notifications out very fast with their network, citizen database that, where our citizens can opt into the program and will do that at first, and a simple implementation and use. So they also have a weather component and we've also, that has come with the package, it was included. And they call it a patented weather system and that means that they can direct based off of information from the NOAA bulletin. As you know, that they have these cones that they distribute on where the storms are going. They take that information and then distribute that information to our citizens, not by county but by that cone of the bulletin that's coming out. The types of warnings that they can include are the severe thunderstorms, flash floods, tornadoes, hurricanes, winter storms. And as I said, the bulletins are targeted to the citizen's path. The notifications are based off of the address that the citizen actually puts into their system and the contact. How does it all work and how does it get delivered? Well, they have text messages, they have voicemail, they have computer email alerts. The citizens are notified by their preferred method, so if they want to be notified by all of these methods, they can. If they want to be notified individually, they can also set up for that. They can have multiple phone numbers, they can have multiple email addresses. A call will be made at the very first for our citizens to opt into the program, like I said before. And they can add or remove themselves at any time through the web portal. How does it work for us? Well, it works alongside all of our other public information right now. It goes along with the website, it goes along with the newsletters, and it goes along with our social media. Emergency notifications about hazardous events and weather situations are sent out from the program along with general notifications or reminders. Like I said, emergency events for police fire EMS. We have a roadway issue, we have a natural disaster that's coming through, as you see with the hurricane, or we have a fire or some information like that you also see. We can also use it for general events, so it's not just about emergencies anymore. It's been expanded what we can use it for, we have unlimited access, so it's up to our imagination. We've already decided that we can use this for Parks and Recreation, getting information out there. The electric and water services department will send out reminders to our utility customers or events where we might have an outage in this place or the next. Town events and meetings, so we can send out information based off that we're going to have a new event that maybe our citizens weren't aware of or events in the past that we've already set up. And that's it for my presentation, but does anyone have any questions?
Is there a cost to sign up for any of those? If I choose to sign up for all of them, is there a cost?
There's no cost to the citizen. There is a mobile application that the citizen can use and if you, it's like in the Android or the iTunes marketplace for Apple devices. I can't remember the exact cost, I know it's under $5, but what that, that's not something they have to have to use this system. What that does is if they move from location to location, if they go to Virginia or if they go to South Carolina or they move to another place in North Carolina, if they have the Code Red system and they have that application on their phone, it will alert them of things that they're moving into in that situation. So let's say that I go halfway across the state and there's a severe thunderstorm or tornado coming through the Raleigh area. At that point in time, I would be notified by that application just because I moved into it with my phone. Otherwise, the system notifies on our location.
Is it activated now?
We hope to launch this in the end of this month or maybe the first of next month. We're going through a transition from the original purchase of the product, so we're just trying to work out exactly how we're going to get this, the opt-in part that I was discussing earlier, how we're going to get that out to our citizens and get them involved. Best way to brand the product.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Sound like it might be a pretty good thing.
A lot of other entities are using it and I think it's very helpful in getting the word out in closer to real time to our citizens, so I think it'll be very helpful.
So just to add to that, a great deal of people, of local governments across the state are using the program in our area and further beyond.
Thank you.
Item nine is a public hearing.
At this time, we do have a public hearing on a request for rezoning. In accordance with statutory requirements, notice of the public hearing was published in the Daily Reflector on February 28th and on March 6th. Copy of the notice of hearing was also mailed to the owners of all parcels, avoiding the property that's under consideration. The property under consideration is the Waldeb Holdings LLC property. This is 2.33 acres located on the north side of Four Lines Road, just east of the intersection of Four Lines and Reader Branch. The property is currently, oh, I'm sorry, this is a aerial view of the property and again, it's these two tracks, these two tracks. This is a shot from our zoning map. The property is currently zoned General Business District and the applicant requests rezoning to Industrial District. This shows you the zoning of adjoining parcels to the east and north of the subject property. The properties are zoned General Business District. To the immediate west of the property, two tracks next door are zoned Industrial District. And then south of the subject property, the properties on the south side of Four Lines Road are also zoned Industrial District. This is a shot taken from our Horizon Land Use Plan map. It shows the area under consideration as appropriate for commercial uses. The Planning and Zoning Board did vote to recommend approval of the request of rezoning at their meeting on February 18th. A copy of the Planning and Zoning Board meeting report is included in your agenda packets. Before introducing the applicant as representative, does the council have any questions for staff?
Could you explain to us what's allowed in industrial versus business?
The industrial zoning classification includes, includes all of the uses that are allowed in the General Business District, but also includes more uses that include light industrial type uses.
Can you explain some of those?
Well, one use that was proposed on the property involved the mixing of some ingredients to produce a beverage and that, according to ordinance, was only allowed in an industrial district. Now, the industrial district does include some larger scale things such as concrete, plants, asphalt, and things of that nature. In this case, it would be highly unlikely that this property could support those uses because of its size. So I think the applicant or his representative will go in more detail about the types of uses they hope this will allow them to be able to lease units in the property for.
Could you specify a few other uses of it that you have not mentioned, industrial?
Let me get the zoning ordinance instead of doing it off the top of my head.
It appears across the street is industrial, is that correct?
Yes, and that similar uses to what they have in mind are located across the street. The only true industrial, heavier industrial uses across the street are the concrete plant and perhaps Robert's Welding. The other uses on the south side of the street tend to be more general business type uses actually, but like the American Freight Trucking Terminal, that is a use that would be included in an industrial classification rather than a general business classification. The industrial district is a long list of uses because it does include all of the General Business District uses. So let me just give you some examples if you'd like. Of course, all of the traditional general retail and office type uses would be included. But beyond that, you also have things like building maintenance services, communication facilities including radio and television broadcasting towers, contractors' offices which would include open storage in a industrial classification, equipment rental and leasing, heavy and light equipment repairs, exterminating services, medical and dental offices, mini storage facilities, photocopying and duplicating services, refrigerator large appliance repairs, other types of repair shops, truck utility rental sales and leasing, upholstery and furniture And the things I'm reading tend to be the things that would be in an industrial district that might not be in a general business district.
Remember down the corner of Reader Branch and Four Lines Road, there was a question about rezoning, a question in the corner there a few years ago and it went to court. The lot was not large enough for the residential, do it to correct department corrections, a youth offender?
Yeah, actually wasn't a request for a change in zoning, but a request for a conditional use permit.
Conditional use, and what, is that for industrial or is it for the general business?
Well, that conditional use permit could, if approved, be allowed in a general business classification.
Thank you.
Was that enough samples? Any other questions for staff? The owner is with us tonight, it's Mr. Walter Cobb, and then I believe he has a representative that's going to speak with him, Justin Alar. Thank you.
Guys, I've got a quick packet I'd like to hand out to the council and the mayor. Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for seeing us tonight for this request. We hope that this won't be too labor-intensive on you folks. I've put together a brief packet to sort of explain this property and if this little gizmo in my hand will work, I can pull it up on the screen. First slide you see will give you an idea of the general area this is located. It's located on Four Lines Road just off of South Memorial Drive. Closer idea will give you, the highlighted parcel is the subject property. Property consists of several offices and office suites that right now are host to several smaller businesses. And as you all know, that when the economy started to lose traction, it was very difficult for owners and of investment properties. for owners and of investment properties to continue to keep those things leased. The hardest people hit in this were unfortunately small businesses, and so it becomes a very competitive atmosphere to try to get tenants in here. My client right now has three empty spaces, one of them being a 4,000-square-foot space that was recently vacated by Marita Bread when they filed bankruptcy. And so that has given us an appetite to increase the zoning for this particular piece of property to include industrial zoning. This will show you on this next slide, some of the businesses that are surrounding this, and a lot of them have to do with industrial-type uses. In some municipalities, these would be already viewed as industrial-type users, like for example, Robert's Company is zoned commercial. In fact, most of the things to the south of this property are industrial users, and then to the immediate west, it's also zoned industrial. Obviously, Bird Tile Distributors is a pretty heavy use, and Lambert's Cable Splicing is also along the lines of a more industrial use, although it is zoned commercially, right, commercial right now. This will give you an idea to further illustrate how the lion's share of the properties around this are currently industrial-zoned. This will give you an aerial view facing north where you can see the road frontage and the condition of the property. Matter of fact, when I first met Mr. Cobb about two and a half years ago, I came up to the property, and here he was. It was about 110 degrees outside, and this man was outside painting the chain-link fence to make sure it still looked fresh and clean. Anybody who knows Walter Cobb will honestly say he's one of the hardest-working men you will ever care to meet. I saw him pick up a car tire and throw it in the back of a 2,500, about 80-pound car tire. I said, "Let me help you with that." He said, "No, I got it." But I've mentioned that because you have an owner who really takes pride in the way his operation is run and the way things look out there. I think it gives you some idea of the type of due diligence that he does when he rents a space, and furthermore, what he does to keep his property appealing and in good standing with the community around it. This is a property facing the south where you can see again those industrial users. Advance Moving and Storage, Nordex is manufacturing windows, you have Linex who does a spray-in bed liner, and then FedEx is obviously self-explanatory. Again, the users to the west, in this case, to the right, are again, pretty intense uses. Facing east, facing west. Exterior photos of the subject property. Again, we have a shared loading dock, a nice layout yard, roll-up doors, existing signage. Across the street, you have Cabinet Manufacturing and Dale Music Company. Looking right from the subject, Adams Building Supply, which is currently zoned industrial, Bird Tile and Ferguson Bath fittings, and across the street, Advance Moving and Storage, and again Nordex. And looking left, you can see S.T. Wooton, which is obviously a heavy industrial user, FedEx, Roberts, the Kiwanis Club, and then immediately to the east is a vacant lot. And this is a picture of the subject property from Opus. That essentially concludes our presentation tonight, and Councilmember Moore made a great point in what does this offer that the general business class does not offer. It's an excellent point. Simply what this is going to do is give us a broader palette to create as welcoming to tenants that we possibly can. Some of those tenants might be a company that wants to lease some machinery or something like that. Other things could be repairs on various types of equipment. And another important thing to point out here is the storage of goods and materials, as you can see next door to the immediate west of the property, and then sales and leasing options. Like I said, again, the hardest hit in our economy was the smaller mom and pop, unfortunately. And so a lot of this ties the hands of this particular owner, and so we hope to be able to have a little bit more flexibility in that. And certainly with the size of the piece of property, it really is naturally limited to anything like an asphalt plant or anything that would be maybe seen as offensive or a 24-hour-type business.
Want to have any questions?
Does your map agree with this map?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Does your map agree with this map? I remember on your map, it didn't look like anything was industrial over there on that side of the road.
Yeah, the property immediately to the west, the two tracks facing the map to the left, the property are zoned industrial.
Okay.
Where Adams Concrete is.
Okay.
There.
They're already zoned industrial.
Is there any difference in the shrubbery required?
In this particular case, there would be no landscaping requirements. It would be, it would cover some facilities.
Are there any differences in shrubbery, landscaping?
No. I mean, the same basic requirements would apply to general business, but wouldn't to industrial landscaping, being that adjoining properties are not a less of intensity.
Princess, when the dollar store downtown was put in, it has metal siding completely, and the shrubbery requirements, there's none along the road. So I was wondering if you change, do you have shrubbery?
Nothing in changing the zoning would affect any requirements for landscape or shrubbery in this particular case.
Any other questions? That being said, we'll open the, the public hearing declared open. Anyone that would like to speak in favor, may do so. Anyone that would like to speak in favor?
My name is Graydon Tripp, and I own the lot adjacent to Mr. Cobb's property. I have no objection to changing the zoning on it. I would just hope that the town would rezone my lot the same way. And so if all the other areas around there are zoned industrial, I think it'd be appropriate for his and my lot, too. So I hope the town will look favorably on my request forthcoming. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, declared a public hearing closed. What's the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Snugget.
Have a motion second for approval. Any discussion?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries.
Just like to thank you all. I give a few of these presentations across eastern North Carolina, and I'll be honest with you, the town of Winterville has been some of the nicest people I've ever been with, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
We'll keep our eye on Walter, because I've been knowing Walter a long time. He hadn't always been as hard a worker as you say.
I thought we could hear some good stories. We'll have to roast him some other time. Thank you, guys, again.
Item number 10 is public comment, and we do have one that has signed up. The board, several years ago, voted that when someone desired to speak, that the mayor had to read the policy on public comment, so I'll do that at this time. The public comment period of 30 minutes provides an opportunity for residents to comment on any item included in the agenda or to address the town council on any other matter related to the town of Winterville. For an item included in the public hearing section of the agenda, residents should address the council at the time the mayor invites public comment on the item. No public comment may be made to the council during the meeting except during the public comment period or as part of a public hearing. Individual speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes, and no more than three speakers may address the council on a single matter. The town council may elect to take no action on the matter, addressed by a speaker, may schedule the matter for further consideration at a future, excuse me, future council meeting, or may refer the matter to town staff for disposition. Copies of the town's public comment policy are available in the rear of the assembly room. And Ms., and I probably will mispronounce her name, Ms. Mary Fedeash.
Fedeash.
Fedeash, Fedeash, would, has signed up and would like to speak on a proposal for an off-leash dog park fee based on rabies tags.
My name is Mary Fedeash, and I originally am from Durham, and Durham and Durham County and Wake County have off-leash dog parks, and it's fee-based. You're required to register your dog within 30 days after buying or getting a dog with the county, and then to be able to use an off-leash dog park, you pay a yearly fee. But you must have the rabies tag, and they must be registered dogs. Each county, Durham County and Wake County, actually have a database that has all of the dogs that are registered for the whole county, which, from what I understand, and I had one dog missing one time, I had to call around to the different vets to see if maybe they picked up the dog and the animal control. Where in those counties, you just go to the county and they help let you know if that dog has been picked up by animal control. Also, it gives the dogs a great place to be able to run. In Winterville, there is no place for your dogs to run. You have to walk them, and that's it. There is a dog park in Greenville. It is free. They're always looking for volunteers to help down there because it is not kept up the way I was used to having things kept up. And I am a grandmother and don't want to be down there with 200 college students because it's right in the middle of the college district, and it's just different. Where if you pay a fee, everybody's made responsible, and people know if you're in there and you don't have your tag on there that shows that you have a dog park license, they ask you to leave. And I just thought it was a really good idea. I have been in contact with the commissioners, Pitt County commissioners, and I was advised this morning that I should go to the various town councils and ask if they would be interested in having a dog park in their areas. Durham County started with one dog park in 2004, off-leash dog park. With their fees, they have now grown to three off-leash dog parks and three leashed walking areas in their various parks all over the county so that they, people can go and let their dogs run free and play for a while. But the fee pays for that. It pays to build the additional parks. It pays to help somebody monitor it. It pays for the bags, it pays for the water. These fees help pay for all of that. And I just wanted to present that to the council to see if, to get myself on the agenda for another time, if you would be interested. The Pitt County Commissioners advised that I get in touch with you and Aiden in Farmville, and then go to Alice Keen, and then I go to the county commissioners and present it to them. And I have never done this before, I just really feel strongly about having a dog park in Winterville. But so that you don't have to pay for it, it'd be nice if we got the county commissioners to do it for the whole county.
Do you have any idea what that fee costs in the other town?
I have given you the fee structure. When I started and when I still lived in Durham, in 2004, we paid $5, but we were the first, that was the first dog park. The fee now is $15, I believe, or 17. And you pay, that's a yearly fee to be able to use the dog park. But I have, in the packet I gave you, is the original handbook. I called to see if I could get a current copy, but they didn't have one online, and I did this very quickly this morning. So I had my original handbook, and I printed that out, and then I gave a copy of the current fee structures, their rules, their rates, everything. The risk, you had to sign a waiver that you will be responsible for your dog and all those things. I put it all in those packets I gave to everybody.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
The next item is the consent agenda, or the items that need to be removed from the Hearing none, do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Should I move?
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Okay. Under old business, first item is economic development.
Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to inform you that the first meeting of the Economic Development Task Force was held on February 18th in Town Hall. Mary Lilly with Greenfield Development came and worked with the members of the task force. It was an introductory kind of get-to-know-you meeting. She talked a little bit about strategic planning and economic development and what it would mean for Winterville, and we do have the next meeting scheduled for March 25th at 5:30 in the Town Hall Executive Conference Room, and we will continue to keep you updated as we move forward in the process.
Okay. Thank you. Item number two is a discussion on the removal of the solid waste container.
Mayor and council members, after the February council meeting, staff was directed to perform a count of the solid waste carts, both household garbage and recyclables, after a pickup cycle. As you see in your packet, on February 21st, staff conducted that count. It took staff approximately seven hours to conduct the count, so it's rather labor-intensive. But I believe out of a total of 3,503 solid waste customers, we had a total of 550 carts that were still roadside after the pickup, which equates to approximately 16% of the customer base who would be non-compliant if the ordinance were changed. We await your direction, but we feel like 16% is not a large percentage of the customer base. But with that said, we leave it for your discussion and direction.
As far as according to my agenda, it was just a report, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Item number four is, I'm sorry, item number three, report on possible structures needing demolition.
At the February council meeting, the council asked that planning staff prepare an updated report on vacant, dilapidated housing in Winterville that may qualify to require demolition. And so in your agenda packet is a copy of a list of properties, the address and other pertinent information on properties that contain vacant, dilapidated structures, as well as a copy of the map that's on the overhead. We last gave a report of this nature in March of 2012. At that time, reported that there were 12 vacant housing units that appeared to be deteriorated and might qualify for required demolition based on the condition. Of those 12 structures, at this point in time, two have been demolished. One has been replaced, demolished and replaced. One has been repaired and is now occupied. One is currently in the process of being repaired. They've obtained permits and started the work. One, we just recently learned, is proposed to be demolished by Habitat for Humanity and a new structure located on that property. Two of them have been formally condemned by Pitt County inspections, but they are still standing and no action to remove the structures. still standing and no action to remove the structures that have taken place. And then there has generally, basically been no change in the status of the remaining four that we had reported on. So of the originally reported twelve, there are six that are still standing and have not been addressed and that there is no pending action to abate. And then we have added one additional to the list that existed back in March, but they're just failed to include on the list. So there are, based on this windshield survey, a total of seven vacant, deteriorated structures that may, after a more thorough inspection, appear that they may actually be dilapidated and require, under a minimum housing code, qualify for required demolition.
Alan, the two the county has said they weren't in habitable, what's, what's the next step the county will do?
From my understanding, the county took that action because it was not safe and required the occupants to leave.
But nothing else?
But that they-
And just left vacant after that?
Right. I'm not aware of any further action that they, that the county planned relative to those, but condemned and required the occupants to leave because of the conditions.
Is no power going to a measure?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, but I, I can't say for certain whether or not power should be.
Do we have communication with the county once this happens, as far as cutting the power off? The county says they're not, they're not meet code?
I'm not certain. I was not aware of these until I saw the condemn notice on one of them. And obviously, it happened very recently. And so I called and asked about the condemnation.
So we don't, so we don't know if there are, the power or not?
Don't, don't know for certain.
So a child would wander into that vacant house and electrocute it?
We will check with finance to see if, if the electricity is still on at these structures. But I noticed Mr. Weldon's still with us and so I'm excited because this is some of the things he will get started with upon his time as he comes on board with us.
Have we, have we, I'm gonna use the term destroyed any houses in this year's budget that we allotted for demolition?
We have not demolished any ourselves, of course. We had the one project with the Walla property that, that we worked with the, the county on that and hope to continue those relationships into the future. But no, and that's part of what we want to do in the new budget and try to put forward some monies or set some aside. I think some were potentially, monies were set aside in the planning budget and we're restructuring things and hope to add some money in for the next budget for demolition. And for minimum housing code improvements.
If you got prioritization, which one would go first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth?
They will be prioritized, yes, based off of conditions.
So what planning staff would traditionally have done is involve Jim Galaway, Tom Harwell's office to take the next step. And it would be a legally valid opinion about the severity of the condition and whether or not it's actually dilapidated. Well, now with Mike Harwell's staff, he'd be able to make that determination because I believe he has the appropriate credentials to do that.
He does, and, and that's gonna be part of the reason bringing all of the services back in-house will help because we will then be able to, to, I think, better keep up with where we are on the status of those types of projects.
This came about as a discussion was going on as to houses that need repairing in Winterville, the fact we have lots of citizens, and lastly, I don't have my numbers in front of me. We have a lot of people that are on the waiting list for the county that have been up there for years. And we kinda got all on demolition and I'm not hearing anything about repairing. But that was the thing, our housing monies were, some years, we have not used them. They've gone back into the general fund. And the idea is that if we would use those funds, we could have done a lot more repairs. We could have done some demolition with that money, those monies.
We have discussed with James Rhodes with the county, they do have the running list. I believe it's over twenty people that are on the list currently that have various needs. And we are trying to, this year's budget, we spent most of the money on one project, but moving forward with trying to create a program that we would do emergency repair, small repairs, and try to spread the money out over more Winterville citizens who are in need versus just focusing on one project. So that is in the works and anticipate trying to put more monies in the budget for the new year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is relocation of the Pitt County Collection site off of Rita Branch Road. Maybe we've already covered that, or have we?
Mayor, members of the council, if I may, I would like to combine items four, five, six, and seven, which are relocation of the Pitt County Collection site off of Rita Branch Road, future rescue services, which really should be EMS, library funding from the county, and a mid-year report on the number of citizens out of town using library, using the Winterville library versus in-town. I've combined those in one abstract to report to the council. These are carryovers from last month's meeting. Staff is currently working diligently on all four of those items and I'll be reporting back to you individually as we have information to report.
Okay. Moving on down to item number eight then is the goals for the legislators.
Mayor is a member of the council. This is a carryover from a previous meeting where you all decided during the February council meeting that you would submit your individual goals for the legislators to me. I would compile those goals and send them back out to you so that you could compile a master list. Excuse me, my voice is trying to go. There would probably be some people happy about that. Currently, we have the following goals listed. Councilwoman Cooper submitted bike trails, and if we have these incorrect or missed one, please let us know. And Noble Canal, Councilwoman Moore submitted having the legislators take another look at the groundwater reduction requirements under the capacity use rules. Councilwoman Moy submitted Noble Canal. Councilwoman Robertson submitted Noble Canal. Completion of DOT projects, especially the paving of Boyd Street and signage of unmarked crossings, and then water issues. We submit these for your discussion this evening and then hopes that we can compile a master list to possibly get to the legislature as soon as possible. I do have some updates. I, I am not prepared to discuss them this evening regarding Noble Canal and some of the DOT projects. So we, I, I need to, to compile those, that information and get that to you. And we'll try to do that this week.
Is there any information on the roundabout on four lines?
Yes, I have information on that Boyd Street project. And again, the state funding is gonna be an issue which will probably keep both of those projects from happening currently.
How much are they short?
I'm, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I read somewhere that they figured the cost of a roundabout is about a quarter of a million. They constructed them so high.
I believe the cost is probably gonna exceed that because of the land and, and the other things that come into play. And just a reminder, this is further down on the agenda under New Business, but Town Hall Day, which is the day that cities and towns go to Raleigh and, and talk with the people who represent us, is earlier this year. It's usually held in June and it's March twenty-seventh this year. So any list that you all decide upon together, it would be helpful because this list would theoretically be carried to Raleigh on the twenty-seventh.
Any other goals that someone might want to suggest? Excuse me, moving on to New Business, the joint use agreement with the city of Greenville.
Mayor, members of the council, before we move, i- i- am I to understand that the list we have in the abstract is the list that you all want to submit as the master list?
I'm sorry.
It looks like the priority is Noble Canal. And the other two are three or, three people were for that particular one, so that would be number one.
Did you say one for number two?
I, I said number two. Noble Canal is the only one that has three people. None of the others has, has that.
To me, it makes a lot of sense to do Boyd Street.
And water, well, when I say water issues, I was referring to what you're talking about.
Water issues, um, I've been, I've been told by a number of people that, that the groundwater has risen quite a bit and that they will study it. It might help us out in all the towns east and north Carolina quite a bit. Mentioned last meeting, there was a bill to penalize the cities in the east who have municipal electric capacities. But they're involved with the, the cities in the west. And maybe when they did this law of groundwater, they affected the cities in the east same way, but not, not the municipalities in the west. So this study would look and see if the groundwater is risen, table has risen, and do we have to, to decrease our water usage again, which will cost all of our citizens directly.
I believe that the, the reduction that is scheduled for August of this year will probably happen just by virtue of the timeframe, but the next reduction would be in two thousand and eighteen, I believe. So certainly, there could be time to address that.
Do a study.
Is this a federal mandate or a state mandate to reduce the groundwater?
This is a state mandate.
State.
State.
Just like municipalities' electories, you know. Why would they penalize the cities in the east but not penalize the cities in the west? The bill was written, it was for all the municipalities who had the debt for electric cities. And then they, the first year, they just included Smithfield Selma. And then next year, they included all the municipalities in the east. And they cut out all the municipalities in the west. Little bias there. We're paying the price. I'll second since two people comment on the water issue.
Okay, on the New Business is the joint use agreement with the city of Greenville.
Mayor, members of the council, you have before you tonight a draft joint, joint use agreement between the city of Greenville and the town of Winterville for the use by the town of the city of Greenville's nineteen ninety-seven one-hundred-and-ten-foot Emergency One aerial ladder truck. That's quite a mouthful. The term of the agreement is for one year initially and may be extended afterward in one-year increments. The city will continue to own and maintain insurance on the said apparatus while the town will house, operate said apparatus for use within the town as the Winterville Fire Chief deems appropriate. And the town will also respond with said apparatus to the mutual and automatic aid calls within the areas already established between Greenville and Winterville through specific agreements between both entities. The town is required to make said apparatus immediately available to the city of Greenville anytime that their two thousand and ten platform is out of service for longer than four hours. Said apparatus shall display both entities' respective departments' names. In other words, it would be the city of Greenville and the town of Winterville displayed on the truck. Staff is excited to have the opportunity and request that council approve the joint use agreement with some contingencies. The city of Greenville approved the agreement at their February eleventh, two thousand and thirteen council meeting. I would request that the council approve going forward with the agreement contingent upon all of the appropriated inspections and review of said maintenance documents prior to us actually taking possession of the vehicle.
Years ago, they had a policy that you had to get rid of the truck after twenty years. And we had a truck that was, had three thousand miles. Then they changed the rule a few years ago and said as long as it met certain testing requirements. So we can't use the truck unless it meets those requirements. And your truck can go forever, as long as it meets those requirements. So just for information purposes.
As the chief's- Chief, have you seen this truck?
We have actually, well, everybody's familiar with the truck. We've actually been training on it for several months now, about once a week.
And it's in what we think is good working condition?
It's in good working order. It's, it's not new. It's a nineteen ninety-seven model, but-
Was sixteen years old.
What color is it?
Unfortunately, it's red.
Have you climbed the top of the ladder yet?
Unfortunately.
Oh, yeah.
And back down.
We could use the bunch of jumping during the festival this year, maybe.
I asked a question, what would a new truck like that cost in today's world? Somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and a one and point twenty-five million dollars. So I think it's a win-win situation for Winterville. I know we've got to get it inspected and keep it up and all that, but we have not had to spend money buying it.
That's right.
How many miles on it?
I don't remember.
Ten thousand, five thousand?
Like forty thousand, I'll estimate.
Within the contract, tell me this, if we get this thing inspected and it passes inspection, I don't know, three months from now, something goes out and you come back in here and you say, man, it's gonna take about sixty thousand dollars to get this thing back running. Who's responsible for that?
Well, we, we would be, but I don't think we'd be talking about that much money. I mean-
I hope not.
Me too.
Well, I'm gonna be asking a whole lot of questions. I think it's a great opportunity, but I wanna be very clear that I'm not looking to folks be running back in here saying, oh, we need to fix this. Oh, we need to fix that next month. Oh gracious, three months from now, we got some old stuff we gotta fix. I'm gonna be very unhappy if that takes place.
Understand.
Okay.
My question is, is how are we going to manage it different from what we did with the rule? How are we going to manage sharing this truck with Greenville with us compared to what we had with the rule? What are we gonna do different?
Well, this, this is just a contract for the use of the truck and what that truck will be responding to. The contract we have with the Rural Association was a little bit more in-depth and had a lot more different facets to it than, than just using a single truck.
Does that answer your question?
This truck would reach the tallest structure at Pitt Community College?
Yes, sir.
The truck would, the only time that the truck is expected to be taken back to Greenville is if their current aerial truck is out of service for four hours or more, or for longer than four hours. Or if we are called mutual or automatic aid, as we currently already are, to a geographical area already delineated in, specific in current agreements. Otherwise, we will have the permission to use the truck for any and all calls that we would have, subject to the Fire Chief's discretion.
I think it's been a non-active truck for them. Isn't that correct?
It's been out of service, I'd say, probably going on a year now. It's a reserve. It's been in service sporadically when other trucks go down.
The way I understand this, this would certainly reach a two-story building, but it would also go over the center of a building if you could not make entrance into a building from the rooftop. Do you have the DeLuise guns on that?
Yeah, it, it's got a pre-pipe waterway.
Right.
And you use it for other things, ventilation and whatnot.
So you can work ventilation from the center of a roof that you couldn't ordinarily get to?
That's right.
It's not just necessarily height, but getting into a, over a building?
For, for us, it's more harder. For us, it's more horizontal reached in vertical height.
That's a question. Chief, we bought a motorcycle from Greenville for $1. Does that vehicle cost us very much?
No, sir, it didn't.
For $1, how many years ago was that? Four years ago, a dollar motorcycle. If that deal's anywhere close to this deal, it's a home run.
I would agree.
For a dollar.
Yeah, but the only thing that I see with that is that we paid a dollar, it belonged to us.
Yes.
But this right hand, it will never belong to us. I mean, we can place, it's just like a rental property. You can go in and pay as much money you want to in it, but never own it. So I'm just saying, I'm just like what the council was saying a few minutes ago. You know, if we go out there and we need to keep it up to a good cold in order for us to keep it in that bay, it has to be in cold for us to be able to use it. We're going to have to keep it up.
That's right.
Now, when they need it, it needs to be ready to go, regardless of what it costs. And that's one of the things that I think that we need to be able to look at and be able to understand that we're willing to accept the responsibility. Because they expect for it to be in ready condition if there is a need for them to take theirs out of service.
Well, and I think alternatively, we expect to get it in usable condition. Therefore, I think the chief and I talked at length today about making sure that service records, maintenance records, that have been kept on the truck and potentially some outside person knowledgeable and that kind of thing come and take a look at the truck prior to bringing it in service or even prior to us signing the agreement to make sure that we...
And let me be clear, I'm not concerned with the management of it. I think it's certainly an opportunity for our town to have that here. I'm just concerned that we don't get caught in receiving a truck problems and then we have to attend to those problems. And the next thing you know, you know, we're spending 20, 30, 40,000 dollars. If we're getting a good truck, if we're getting a truck that is operational, it's going to function correctly, and we just have general maintenance, I'm all for that.
There are no guarantees, but I think our job is to do our best due diligence to make sure that we have looked at any obvious and potential problems that are obvious to people who know how to look at that stuff.
I have a suggestion. It may be helpful, it may not. But under this paragraph six maintenance, it sounds like to me the idea is is that the routine maintenance the town of Winterville is agreeing to make. But any extraordinary expense, you know, is another matter. I think you said that the city council in Greenville has approved the document as it is. I mean, one thing we could do is to go back in and do some revision of the document. And where it says all maintenance, to come up with some language that talks about routine maintenance and then put in some language about extraordinary expenses, what's supposed to happen there. You know, that should satisfy everybody if in fact they're expecting us to take care of routine and if it's a big expense, you know, we need to sit around the table and talk about it.
That's where I'm at. I think it's a great opportunity for us as a town and for a community, yes. But I just don't want us to place ourselves into a situation where as that we'd be better off to go out and buy our own. And that's where I'm at. I don't want to have to spend a whole lot of money on something for someone else. And at the end of the day, or at the end, we don't put enough money into it, we could have our own.
Well, I...
That's why I said what I did.
No, I understand, and I think all of the points are very well made. I just want to assure the council that if we start spending that kind of money, we're going to ask the council the agreement and return the truck before we would spend that kind of money.
I would assume that in the contract is an out for us if we need it. I'm sure of that. I imagine our council will see to it with that.
Termination can be made by mutual agreement of both parties or either party with a 30-day written notice.
Yeah, it's a pretty quick and easy out. I mean, and again, there's a lot of background that's gone on this that I'm unaware of. And again, my suggestion may not be helpful, but...
I like the idea of if we could maybe just add just a couple of sentences to that language in regards to any major maintenance issues.
And bear in mind also that they, when they give it to us, it's supposed to be ready to go. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we break the agreement, we should be able to turn it back the same way that we received it.
I assume we will have to.
Do we need a motion on this? I guess we do.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the joint agreement with the city of Greenville.
Have a motion?
Changes to King Laster's suggestion. Even though the city manager's already signed it, but...
It may have to go back to the city council.
That's, yeah, that's the only thing.
So I would suggest we hold off approving it. I don't know what verbiage we're going to end up with.
Yeah, I'm sure, and that's why I asked if the city council approved it. It'll obviously go back to them once again, and I don't know how quick this needs to happen. So there's some building delay with making some changes. City council meets relatively quickly. I mean, we could have something back to them shortly, but...
I make a motion that we approve the joint agreement if they, with King's adjustment, and they approve it also.
Councilor Moore, would you be willing to add also contingent upon all of the appropriate inspections and...
Yes, and inspections.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
That's not going to, we're not running into any time issues or anything you need to do or...
Nothing specifically.
I mean, I would just feel more comfortable with what we want to do so that we're protecting what potentially we could have to pay out.
The only thing we're really working against is the next ISO inspection, and we don't know when that'll be.
Sound like I always have a throat problem tonight.
I know.
It's going around, okay. It's on this end, though. Y'all need to stay away from us. I think it's a win-win situation. City Greenville's been very good to us in the past, and they've been a great neighbor, just like the motorcycles, an example.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I want to make sure I understand what attorney's going to be checking with.
I'll speak with David and town manager and work on some language. But the concept is, is where, right now, it says responsible for all maintenance. That we limit that to routine, maybe scheduled. I find the appropriate words, sometimes they get caught up in the military discussion, but routine maintenance that the town would be responsible for. But for any extraordinary expenses, that, you know, we're not agreeing to that. That'll have to be discussed amongst the two parties.
And I assume that that language will then involve, unless we do damage or responsible or negligent in any way regarding yada, yada.
We'll get something working on that.
That would be part of Mr. Moore's motion?
Yes.
Probably not the yada, 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 but I think the rest of it is.
I have faith in our town attorney.
Yep.
And our town manager.
And we'll try to expedite it so that all the boards can get it back in its revised form and move forward with it ASAP.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is an alternate for the Mideast Commission.
Mayor and members of the council, a few meetings back, the council reappointed Councilman Tony Moore to serve as the Winterville appointment to the Mideast Commission. The commission has also requested that the council appoint an alternate member to be able to attend meetings when Councilman Moore is unable to attend. And I think that's a standard request. So staff requests appointment of an alternate member to represent Winterville.
Does that member have to be a member of the town council?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
But I...
Most of them are elected, are members of staff.
Right. Probably would be better, I would suggest, to stay within the organization just to be able to appropriately bring back the information within the group.
Our next meeting is, which I plan to attend, April 18, Williamson.
I'll volunteer.
I make a motion, alternate be...
I need a second.
All in favor, say aye. I don't even know what the motion was, but we'll go ahead and get it over with. Before somebody backs down.
We will make sure that we contact Ms. Roberts and let her know about Ms. Councilwoman Robertson, and that's wonderful.
Okay.
Congratulations.
All right, item number three is appointment to the third board member to the CMSD Board.
As you all know, we are a member entity of the Contentania Metropolitan Sewerage District. The other two member entities are Aiden and Grifton. Each entity has two board members that sit on that board. Winterville's board members are myself and Councilman Mark Smith. There is a third at-large member that rotates between the member entities for a three-year period. Aiden currently has that seat, and that seat expires this month. So Bear Baldry from Aiden currently sits in that position for Aiden. So we would need to appoint the third board member for the CMSD Board, and that person would, seat would take effect in the first part of April.
I got a question. How long has Bear Baldry been on that board? I don't know.
Not long.
No, I wouldn't say... I don't think he's been on that very long.
I think he was there after...
The day before I left.
Was he?
Yes, he was.
What day of the week? What day do we...
It is the fourth Wednesday, once a month, at 4:30 in Grifton.
At 4:30?
Yes, sir.
In Grifton?
At 4:30.
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't mind, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Mr. Moore, I'd be glad to make a motion.
I looked at it, and I was thinking about taking it, but at 4:30, it would be pushing you pretty tight.
Then I would volunteer since, when that started years and years ago, I was offered the position to run that CMSD 18 years ago, 1975, and I would volunteer to serve on that board if you...
That puts you on two boards.
Well, I have an option in hand.
He's playing no job.
Yeah. I think that would be a good fit for Councilman Moore.
All right.
Councilman Moore?
Moore, Moore.
It would be pretty...
Which one? Okay, so you're going to do it, Tony?
I had to keep my certification up, though.
Where are we skidding? We need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion that Councilman Moore, sir, be our third representative for CMSD Board.
We have a motion.
I'm second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Excellent. We will let them know as well.
All righty, item number four is Town Hall Day.
We talked about it just a minute ago, but again, Town Hall Day is going to be held on March 27 this year in Raleigh. It again offers towns an opportunity to talk to their legislative representatives about things that are going on in their respective jurisdictions. The real push this year is to bring five, so it would be great if most everybody on the board could go, if possible. But having said that, I think we need to register Jasmine by the 15th, the end of this week. So if you all could let me know if anybody's going, if everybody's going, then we will make arrangements accordingly.
I plan on going to that, Ms. Parker.
We'll leave whenever the bosses want to.
I was hoping that everybody on this board could go to that.
Okay.
You know, the old saying, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. We've got a lot of squeaking to do.
I'll check and see. I might commit. Okay, item number five is the approval of the appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my abstract in front of you for a recommendation for Mr. Frederick Pishke to be appointed a non-resident member of the Recreation Advisory Board. He has 20-plus years of experience in Parks and Recreation. He's from Michigan. I believe that he will bring a lot of new ideas and experience with that to the board.
Motion to approve?
The question, the other application, Mr. Sealy, does he meet the, I get mixed up on addresses. Does he meet the criteria to be in this position? Lives on Primrose Lane. I don't, I don't know where all the streets are, unfortunately. Is it in town?
St. Cooper's Point.
So that's in town, so he wouldn't meet the criteria?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, that's fine.
We have a motion. Was there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You realize on the 27th is the same day we have CMSD meeting?
That's correct. We have to rush back.
Okay, item number 15 is other agenda items.
Might want to add the new lot we have on Cooper Street, what to do with it. And maybe we might discuss negotiations with the other property owners beside the property that will connect to our other properties. With houses torn in on Cooper Street.
183.
At this time, there's no connectivity to other town property.
Okay, got it.
I requested a letter to our representative, Jean Farmer Butterfield, with our list of priorities that we set tonight.
I think, Ms. Jasmine, if we got that, we will move forward with it.
We don't need to prove by board.
I think we have the list, so we'll make sure.
Any other agenda items that we need to... Okay, how about items for future agenda work sessions?
Maybe look at our ordinance on junk vehicles. We discussed earlier at times. We have not done anything since that time. For one, I have one next door to me that's been there for several years. It's not covered or anything. Now, they will pay you good money for those junk vehicles. Used to, you had to, you know, pay to get rid of them. Now, they will take them and pay you money.
If my staff's also noticed several ordinances that could use revising, so we may bring not just that one, but there are several coming back. It may have to come in phases, but we know that there are several that we need to either update or change or revise.
I don't know if this is the proper time to bring it up, but I thought I would. Alan and I are members, I guess you call it, members of the MPO organization. He's a TEC committee member, and I'm the TAC. And at our meeting, TAC meeting, by the way, I'm not real sure who attends his meetings, but our meetings is the mayor of Aiden, Greenville, Simpson, Winterville, a county commissioner, DOT, the DOT representative, and others. And this matter about the resolution for regional interstate system was brought up at our meeting back last fall, sometime or another. And I noticed that today, the county commissioners, I don't know, did you meet today? They supported a resolution calling for the development of a regional interstate system. And I would like to see this board do the very same thing, do a resolution. And I guess send it to DOT, is that who we sent it to, Commissioner?
Yes, and Greenville approved it last Thursday, and it's on Aiden's agenda tonight.
Okay. So do I hear a motion that we do a resolution to that effect?
I saw a move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Any other items for the future agendas and work sessions?
Uh, yes, speed, speed bumping on Jones Street. They're almost running a track out there. There's something that we can, that we need to address that we achieve.
Yes, I know the police have addressed that issue many times, but he, Chief may have some updated information.
What we've done in the past, we've used our radar trailer to actually track the times and the speeds of the vehicles over there, and in the past, we haven't really had that much. Now, we have had a few that come through, I'd say less than five percent. What I would recommend though is to go ahead and, I'll go ahead with the radar trailer over there again and try to find out exactly what is occurring, if there's a problem, when the problem is, so we can more adequately address it. And that'll only take about a week or two to do that. In the meantime, certainly, you know, have extra patrols in the area to try to calm traffic down, but I'd like to get a good picture of it, when it's occurring, you know, i- if it's occurring only during, for instance, school times, if you're having, if that problem's occurring again, to go ahead and, so we can better address the issue.
I think it mostly is during the season, when it's getting warm now, take the motorcycles. I just know that motorcycles really, that's a good strike for them to really test the new models out.
Unfortunately, everybody has problems with motorcycles, it's about this time of year when it starts getting a bit warmer, but we can, again, you know, we'll put the trailer out there and try to figure out what's going on, when it's going on, and, and address it, and if you'd like, I'd be glad to report back to you next month.
Now, we have tried this in the past, and it still has not worked. Where it's seemed like to me, it probably quieted itself down for a little while, then does it again.
And nothing.
Is there anything else we can do different than what we have done in the past? I'm just saying, it did work.
Sure.
It worked for a little while, but it.
And that's something that's very common in traffic control, you, when you deploy your resources in a particular area, you write several citations, and traffic tends to, because generally people live in the area, they're speeding, and that generally calms down, then you'll have a period, it'll be calm for a while, and then it'll pick back up, and you have to bring your resources back, because at the same point, and you know, we're getting, obviously having some issues with that particular location right now, you know, we've had other people have called in periodically to the office and saying that they're having speeding in, in Cleveland, for instance, or they're having speeding on Cooper Street, or what have you. So typically we have to move the officers around to kind of meet that, that need to address it, and again, you know, when we move back to Jones Street, and we're over there for a month or so, we may very well have another, you know, another issue pop up somewhere else in town where we have to redirect the services again. There is, I don't know if there is actually a one-hundred percent answer to speeding, because the problem with speeders is that people just don't learn, you know, and all we can do is just to dress it the best we can, write citations, try to get their attention, and yes, it, it does calm it down for a while, but I, I don't honestly believe there is a one-hundred percent, you know, answer to completely stopping out speeding, because Lord knows we've tried.
Did this board ever discuss speed bumps?
I hope not.
Will you hold on?
Yeah.
I'm just asking. I, I would, you know, honestly, the, the traffic engineers, if Tom was here, he would, he would back me up on this, but, um, traffic engineers for years have went against speed bumps for the very reasons, because when you put them in, they cost, you know, about twelve hundred dollars a, a bump, so to speak. And what people tend to do when they're speeding, they'll slow down for the speed bump, and then actually increase speed more to the next bump, if you will. So you, you actually have the same problem, and then of course, citizens tend to complain about that, then it costs twelve hundred to fifty hundred dollars just to remove the bump. So, does it slow down some? Yes, but I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a viable answer at this point. I think that narrowing of the streets, traffic, you know, traffic calming issues have, you know, will help in areas. The best tool we have right now to actually identify an actual problem is our traffic trailer. We, we just recently did Grime Street, for instance, and found that, and I've got this, none of the stats back in my folder back there, um, so, but anyway, it was less than three percent of the cars, we had like ten thousand cars go through there in two weeks, we probably had maybe twenty or thirty, they got up to forty-five miles an hour. So that's a very low number when you're talking about ten thousand cars. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's not a, a problem that we need to address, but it, but it is a very low number, okay? And do we really want to put that much resource into a street and create perhaps another issue to address three or four cars, or, or twenty cars, that may be speeding, when we can use the traffic trailer and some enforcement, try to at least calm it down for a while, then come back and do it again as required?
I can remember working way back when, and neighborhoods would complain about it, we'd go over and set up radar, you know who we caught?
The residents.
People that lived there.
Yes, sir, I've, I've actually had people that complained and.
Yeah.
About speeding, and then when they get written a ticket, they complain to me because they got a ticket.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, and that's happened several times, so.
Since we were mentioning traffic right now, about two weeks ago, I left Mill Street, coming down Depot, coming over here to Town Hall, and there is a stop sign on Railroad Street.
Yes, sir.
And this lady just barely slowed, well, she hadn't even slowed down till I was in the middle of the intersection, and she put on brakes real quick to keep from hitting me, and Tim's brother came over and said, I saw it, he said, I see seven, eight a day going to even slow down for that stop sign. Could we put up a, a sign back maybe halfway down the block that says, Stop Ahead, or something?
Well, I think the son would probably look, we could probably look.
I know we got head little flags up, and there's nothing there but stems up there now, so.
And you said that location again was where now? I'm sorry?
Right over here on Depot and Railroad. It, uh, and, and most of them are when they're headed south on Railroad.
They're not really paying attention, and they go, they blow right through there.
That's right.
But I could certainly look into that, talk to Ms. Parker about it, and see if we can get a couple of extra signs that say, Stop Ahead.
You did say, uh, speed bumping is running by twelve hundred dollars?
This was, that's an estimate served from, uh, three, four, five years ago, when I, when I looked at it, and it, it may very well be more than that now.
Have we covered up with power bill?
No, sir. Not speed bumps, I don't think so. I'll double check. Sure.
I will say it does cost about the same to remove it as it does to put it in, so, unless some, unless things have changed the last five years, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Okay, are any of the staff positions, do they have a report they'd like to give at this time, if they wanted to do it?
Not so much a report, I would just like to invite everyone to opening ceremonies of the 2013 baseball season, March twenty-second, opening ceremonies will be around six P.M.
Thank you. Okay.
I just wanted to make a few announcements. The Economic Development Committee meeting is March twenty-fifth at five-thirty in the Executive Conference Room, and the Town Hall offices are closed on Friday, March twenty-ninth for Good Friday, and Town Hall Day is on March twenty-seventh, from eight-thirty to five o'clock in Raleigh. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll go down to Counselor.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you, I just have one thing, sort of follow-up from something we discussed last month, it's maybe old news for, for the council, but maybe not for some of the citizens here. You might recall last month, it was brought to our attention that a lawsuit had been filed against the town, we saw, I believe the mayor saw it in the, the paper Monday before our Tuesday meeting. I, I, the, the next day after the town meeting, I, I contacted the attorney that was involved in the case, and I think the town manager also spoke with the, I pointed of contact with the insurance company, with the league, and found out that this involved a two thousand and eleven motor vehicle accident, one of our trucks was hit by somebody else, and our, our driver was not negligent or at fault, but the, the truck was basically totaled, and we had only recovered the salvage value for the truck, and it's about twenty thousand dollars that we were owed, and the insurance company for the individual that hit the car was refusing to pay. So the lawsuit was, our insurance company trying to collect the, the, the balance and what's owed to us. I spoke with the attorney, and she very much apologized for not letting us know that the lawsuit had been filed, and I think the same thing came to the town manager from, from the, from the league, but it was all in well a good thing, that they're, they're working for us, and it's no cost to us, and, and trying to recover money, if you will, that's been paid. That's the sum total of that, that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
No comments.
Ms. Robertson?
I'd like to, um, just as a town to recognize this is Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, and it's kind of close to home with me this month, and to urge our citizens to get screen, especially those of us fifty-plus.
Now, what, what is it again?
Colon cancer.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This is Colon Cancer Month.
Shouldn't we vote on the Girl Scout, given that they're not here?
Well, we have a proclamation to give it, and they didn't show, so. Okay. Ms. Smith?
Nothing, sir.
I just got one item, um, I think we talked about it on our last meeting, or meeting before then, about the kids playing basketball, setting up the basketball goal like in the street. I think the last time I heard that, walking on the street, and, and yes, we do have a serious problem, a potential of someone getting hurt, you know. The kids that I approached, they were very respectful, they did what I asked them to do, and, but, we shouldn't have to do that, because it might be the way that I approached them, they decided to do what I asked them, but so that's probably approached them, that probably could've got ugly, or anything like that, but anyway, they are in the wrong, they shouldn't be playing basketball out in the street. I asked them, I said, why don't you go to the park? And they said that because the basketball court was already filled. So I went out there and looked at it, and it was teenagers. And these kids that was playing out in the street were like, I would say from eight to twelve or thirteen. You're not gonna go out there and tell them fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old, y'all need to share the court, but they was taking over the whole court, so the kids really do not have no place to play. So, uh, I think that we need to look at that some sort of way, to, to at least try to separate the age group some way, somehow, so the kids can be able to play on the court instead of then, one set is come out and just take the whole court instead of sharing. But we need to get our kids out of the street some way, somehow, because somebody gonna get hurt.
Do you have a specific location where it's occurring more often? Because I know the police have been looking throughout town.
Walter Street.
And if I may, our after-school hoops program, which does address those sixth through eighth graders, begins next month, I believe it's April sixteenth, and that's every Monday and Thursday from four to six P.M., and that runs through the end of school, so we do have that set time for them to come in and be in a safe, fun, supportive environment that is set aside, again, for those age kids.
That's Monday to Friday.
Monday and Thursday.
Monday and Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
What about the other days? Because if you go and look at the, the court that we have, we do have, we do have girls set aside for younger kids, but it ties itself up with the, the full-size girls. So I, what the boys are doing, the older kids are doing, they're using the whole court, and the one that is for the younger kids is right there in the center of the court, so they can't come out there and play. So really, just those two day, two days, if some ways or not, we might want to look at it a little bit closer, that we can be able to separate it some sort of way, so our kids, the smaller kids, the younger kids can have that same opportunity in older kids. I think we need to monitor a little bit more. If we can.
It, it is a public park, of course. Really, the only ways of separating would be to set hours for certain folks, and that, that's opening a lot of doors if you try to do something like that.
Do you work on it something?
I can look into it, sure.
Well, I mean, you don't have to look at it with that, but I mean, just saying, just look at, see if there are any fine ways to be able to accommodate all the kids.
Sure.
And I think, I know Evan and I have been talking about potentials for program expansions in the future throughout town, but one thing that we might need to start soliciting are is, are the help of some volunteers. We have it in some of the established programs we have now, but again, it would be difficult to have paid staff monitor everywhere that needs monitoring, so if there's an opportunity for people to volunteer to try to help in that endeavor, that might be something that we could implement.
I know the police department has gone, I've called them about our email, the police department, about the intersection of Tyson and Mill, there'd been, the hoop has been put out there in the street, and if you turn on that street, there you are, in a basketball game, and the, and they've been good at responding to get the, you know, the goal away, stays away about a month, then a month later it's back. At least it's gone for that month, and no child's gotten hit playing ball in the street there.
Yes, sir, I do, last Saturday, I got a call about three o'clock in the afternoon of several people in the roadway at Railroad and Tyson Street, and urinating in public, and using profanity, and damaging private property, and consuming alcoholic beverages. I went down there, and sure enough, there were several people there, in different places around that, that area. Whatever they were drinking was in a paper bag, I think I know what it was, but it was in a paper bag. There was several people in the street with a parked car standing around it talking, that sort of thing. And I know that there's no reflection on the police department, they can only work with what we give them, but what we're giving them apparently is not enough. I would recommend this board have a meeting. Invite our town council, uh, counselor to that board. We need to look at the ordinance we've got, possibly rewrite that ordinance, put some teeth into it, maybe expand that, we've got a long, hot summer coming up. And then maybe from the, that board, we can introduce a task force to work just specifically on that problem at Tyson and Railroad Street. Now, those people that live down there, some of them are elderly, they're not going to complain because of retaliation, and I don't blame them. It becomes a town problem when it's out in the street like that. So I'm, I'm asking that town manager get in touch with the members of this board, we set up a meeting that we can come out of there with something to work with for our police department.
And that's fine, but if you can come up with an ordinance, are you talking about an ordinance just for Tyson and Railroad?
That'd be a town ordinance.
The town ordinance, so the town ordinance would cover all areas of town?
Yes, absolutely.
Not just that area?
Absolutely not, no.
I grew up in that area, that's where I'm from. I'm from that area, I grew up on Tyson Street, lived there all my life, and all my life, there have been men on the railroad, they used to stand on the railroad down there after they got off work, it was a gathering place for men. I realize that there are lots of things down there now that I don't consider as appropriate for the area either, but, you know, when we look at it, let's not just look at one port of town, if the ordinance is written up and it is applied for Tyson, we apply for all ports of town equally.
Well, I would suggest it be a town ordinance, not to cover just one, one area. Uh, second thing I have to make it real short, A.G. Cox School, I've been in that traffic down there in the afternoon, you get in that traffic, you cannot back up, go forward, turn left, turn right, you're just sitting there. If we had to get a fire truck or a rescue truck in there, there'd be no way in the world. Once that traffic moves out in the street, again, it becomes the town problem. I know that there's some long range planning about tearing some of that building down and making a, a drive-through there to get some of that traffic off the street, but that doesn't help tomorrow, doesn't help this week. We need to, we need to work on these problems, folks.
If I may, Ms. Parker mentioned something to that effect, I don't know if. If I may, Ms. Parker mentioned something to that effect, I don't know, a few weeks ago. Since that time, I actually spoke with the, one of the SROs in the area that actually works at the school, and I can't remember the gentleman's name that came by the office.
Prince Bunting.
Yeah, but the gentleman that came by the office, but that wasn't Prince. But, um, anyway, we talked to him about that and they, sure be, they were gonna try to help us with directing traffic in front of school, of course, now that hasn't happened.
It's not gonna happen.
Yeah. So we're, we try to do something with them right there on that issue and with the school we have out here on Old Tar, you know, the, the private school, I can't think of the name of it, but, but it's just, the school right here at the corner of Cooper.